Welcome, everyone, to the March 10th, 2015 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Tonight, we have a full agenda here, and also, we will be meeting with the Finance Committee at a later part of our meeting, so get right into it. Is there any announcements that we have? Jeff, do you have any?
None.
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. Public forum. Anyone here for public forum? Yes, come right forward here, please. State your name for the record, and...
Good evening. I'm Tom Greeney. I'm an attorney with Dick Wilson and Amers. This is Patrick Davis. We're here on behalf of the landowner for 0108-109 Straits Road, Stuval Logging. And we are looking to initiate the process with you, the Board of Selectmen, for a zoning map amendment. I sent an email. I don't know if it was circulated. I'll give you just a little point of reference to how they approach. The...I've colored it green, but this is the assessors' map, zoning map. These are already industrial. The rest of this is rural residential. The request is, and this will be in front of the Planning Board, we hope with your permission, would be to change these to industrial. We could also, during that Planning Board process, have the conversation about this parcel. It is under agricultural preservation restrictions, so even if it was owned industrial, it couldn't change from agricultural land, anyway, short of an act of the legislature. So, that would be part of it, but because we don't own that, we wanted to, as the landowner, come before you, according to 48, Section 5. So, we're happy to answer questions for you now, but there would be that public hearing with the Planning Board, I believe, April 8th.
25th?
March 25th is the next one. I don't think we'd get on that because of the public hearing requirements, so I think in talking with the Secretary of the Planning Board, we would be on the April 8th agenda.
What's the intended use?
Assembly of firewood processing equipment in a totally enclosed building. And I think that'll be part of that Planning Board presentation. We've got some schematics of the building that we'd present at that time and answer any questions that Planning Board, Public, Board of Selectmen would have.
Okay. Our job is to basically take your request and pass it on within, I believe it's 10 days, to the Planning Board, which I don't know if we have already done that or not.
No, we'll do that tonight. I've gone over your material. I would move that the Board of Selectmen forward the zoning map amendment for parcels 206-109 and 206-108 to the Planning Board for further review.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. See you at the hearing.
Want to keep this call for notes?
Yeah. Anyone else here for public forum? If not, we'll go right into the minutes.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 10 February 2015.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
One abstention. You weren't there. One abstention.
Oh, one...yeah. Thank you. I abstain key on that. Okay. DPW Director's report. Phil, what have we got going on?
Well, besides fighting the winter months...
Thank you.
Key, yeah, alright.
The other day, we received a letter from DEP for non-compliance at the wastewater plant with a variety of violations. So, in short term, I guess, to put it, we've stopped the septic intake down there, the processing of septic. I notified the Chairman of the Board of Health, and we are obtaining a automatic chlorinator system to put out some of the fire. Tomorrow, or Thursday, Dave Prickett Consulting will be down there to go over the last two to three years of data, and then we are going to submit our plan to DEP and see where we stand and what the cost factor is going to be. The reports here attached with Mr. Prickett's...
So, to just recap what's going on?
DEP came in, did a review, found exceeding limits in three areas. One, E. coli. Two, solids. And three, chlorine. The solids and E. coli are somewhat linked. Mr. ...what's his name?
Prickett.
Mr. Prickett suggested that the plant is not really geared to handle septic, so shut that down temporarily, at least, and gone forward, as Phil has mentioned, with this piece of equipment regarding the chlorination. And then, we owe DEP a response by the 30th of April as to the correction, action taken, further actions planned, and the schedule for those. So, he's already working with Mr. Prickett to work that out.
Do we know what the cause is?
Just too much solids. I mean, that was one of the violations. I mean, the violations is...
Solids and E. coli.
And the E. coli.
Okay, but is there something that's causing the E. coli ahead of time, as...
Don't know that, until we run some data down there.
Okay.
I mean, they came in.
That's what Dave's gonna come in here.
They received all this information from our lab reports, obviously, so...
Okay. Alright, we'll just have to wait and keep an eye on it.
We'll have to wait. You know, I'll definitely keep the board informed of where we stand and what our findings are, but as of now, we...I think we took two big positive steps right off the get-go to pacify a little bit of DEP's requirement, so...
Are they looking for a detailed description of what resolution's gonna be and how it's...
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
You said Dave's meeting with you tomorrow, Phil?
Yes, yeah.
And so, and that'll put a game plan into place, or just kinda...
He'll be here Thursday, yep. Thursday, he's coming in. He's gonna go over some data, you know, and decide. We'll sit down and we'll brainstorm up. We're gonna file with DEP and have them start drafting some language up before the April 30th deadline, and then finalize it by then.
Okay.
And then, come up with a plan.
Okay.
You know, I mean, a permanent plan.
Right. But in the meantime, we've stopped accepting.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Can I report on water? Water transmission line, anything like that?
We're waiting for Mass DOT. I mean, there's been some emails flying around. We're waiting for their approval of our...of the indirect borings.
It's not...yeah, did you see Mike's note?
Yeah, I did see the...
It's not that Mike has not been chasing them, but...
No. Just wondered if we had any...
No updates, no.
That was as of two days ago. He still...
He's gonna put it out for bid again?
Yep. It's gonna be rebid, correct.
Okay.
But...
Different approach on...
Right. But he needs Mass DOT to confirm the...
That's accepted.
Right.
I mean, he has it verbally, but we wanted it written.
We didn't want it written before we got to rebid.
Before we put the bid out to Indirector Board. The Directional Board, and...
Alright.
See what their restrictions will be, which, who knows?
They caused us a lot of aggravation on this one.
They sure did. Because now, you have to, you know, you have the Directional Board under 91, but you still have to jack under the railroad tracks.
Right.
So, you know, we're trying to find a company, or at least try to entertain some companies that do both, so they don't have to...
Okay, that's good. Okay. Anything else? Update on any of the roads? Frost heaves?
Frost heaves everywhere. I mean, the elementary schools. Unbelievable how much it heaved. Smith Academy, but, you know, I mean, there's frosties right out here in front, so we'll just have to wait till it settles and see what happens.
More than likely, it'll go back down. This has been one terrible year...
More than likely, but now, all the blacktop is, you know, cracked, so the integrity's gone, you know, to hold the water. I mean, I'm hoping that the state comes through with some extra money for crack sealing. That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah. If it doesn't, then we should plan on doing crack sealing, even if we have to hold up on some of the streets, because otherwise, you're gonna lose it.
Yeah, that's the plan. I mean, there's some, you know, the new roads. I know Maple Street cracked, you know, so...
Okay. Anything else?
That's about it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take up church property. John?
Hi, John Wilks, North Hat, 277 West Street, North Hatfield. A group of us had gotten together, you know, in late December and thought about, you know, the Council on Aging, some of the operations they were running. And one of the suggestions made by the group members was maybe consider buying the town buying the former Holy Trinity Church. It's still up for sale. We found that out. And what we'd like to do is, and I sent, you know, a cover letter with a petition, which was certified for inclusion in a warrant this year, so we want to put a proposal on the table for the town to consider. I know, you know, you guys are busy tonight. I know you're having a Council on Aging meeting later with the Finance Committee. I'd like to sit in on that, discuss the financial, you know, proposals on that, what implications it might have. But what we're looking for is, we feel that the town is starting to fall short in delivery of services to the elderly. We have an expanding population of the elderly. Right now, according to, in according to figures taken right out of the Council on Aging's current budget application to this Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, we've got 1,016 residents over 60 years old. And what we'd like to see is consideration to expand the services. We feel that the facility downstairs is way outdated. It's not conducive to a lot of programs that are available to the elderly today, so we'd like to see, and hopefully, we can generate enough consideration, at least to spur a discussion on this matter and, you know, expanding the services. You can't keep warehousing the elderly down in the cellar of the basement of the Town Hall. I'm sorry, you know, that's the feeling of most of the people who signed the petition. They feel that it should be better, a better facility for the town and for its citizens. But, you know, again, I hope this is starting, start of a discussion on this. I know money's tight, but there seems to be money for all these little other projects, you know? I'm assuming probably tonight that when you go over the school budget, the school budget will probably be, you know, just the increase in school budget will probably be more in the total operation of the Council on Aging. So, we're asking that consideration and some forethought be given to expanding elderly service in the Town of Hatfield. And this, we feel, is a good step in that direction by providing a new facility, which is available, it's centrally located. And again, it's not a done deal. It's still subject to negotiation, still subject to town, you know, stressing town finances to do it. So, you know, it'll take a meeting of the minds to do it, and hopefully, you know, we could, you know, get this rolling. So, that's, you know, and I want to thank you for the courtesy of doing it tonight, so we can start. It's still, you know, midway through the budgetary process, so hopefully, we can get something going here tonight, so...
Okay. You're aware that we put this petition on the warrant, so that's...
Right. I got notification from the town clerk, so it will go on the warrant. But I think before then, there should be a live discussion, you know? You know, your board members, I know you've been away, you know, just, you know, I'm willing to come down, and other members, you know, who are concerned about it, will, you know... Unfortunately, the Council on Aging meeting was canceled last month, so we didn't have it because of weather conditions, so hopefully, we can meet with them. But we'll see them tonight, I hope, later on this evening, and with the Finance Committee. So, we did put a proposal together. It's not, you know, not cut in stone, you know? There's a lot of variables in it, because, you know, we don't know, you know, many things in regard to the, you know, the Council on Aging, what they really want for programs, what other things we could do with the facility, and so, there's a little, a lot of variables. But we feel it's a building that, you know, has been sitting idle for, what, four years now? That could be utilized by the town for, it would be, we feel, an ideal center, you know, for a small, and I'm saying small, elderly center. We could build a $4 million, $5 million senior center down the road, like you have up in Deerfield and North Hampton, but I don't think the town needs it. But this would be small enough and large enough to deliver the services that the elderly deserve in this town, so...
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I think it's important for the town to have this conversation, John, so thank you and the members for coming forward. I also think it'll be important that some of the comments you just made referring regarding the potential programs and things like that, I think that'll be important to try to have that wrapped up prior to town meeting, so that people know exactly, it's not just about the building, it's about the building and this program and that program and other things that'll be offered. And I know that's in flux also, but, you know, just to give people an idea.
Right. And it's also dependent on, you know, what type of funding you're gonna go forward after that. You know, it's nice to, you know, buy a building, but if it's, you can't support a building, you can't support, you know, the programs in a building, or not willing to support, you know, the programs in a building. You know, again, you know, coming from the, you know, the numbers, you know, a 30-year population now is over 60, you know? And there's services that should be delivered in Hatfield that some people are going out of town to, you know, receive, so, and consideration has to be given that, so...
John, do you have documentation on how much the heat is, how much all the utilities are?
That's available. That's available, you know...
So, that's gonna be needed, because that, those will be questions at the town?
Right, right. That's available, you know? We have that, I think Fran has done some background work there in that area. I know Fred has looked at the structure of the building, you know? It's a very sound building. It's not, you know, it's not gonna fall down. You know, there was, you know, some rumors going around that it's loaded with mold. Well, there's no more mold in that building than there is in this Town Hall, so, going forward there, so, you know, put it into that rumor right now, so... But, you know, we don't want this to be a confrontational thing. I think it's an opportunity. We look at it as an opportunity to move the elderly into a facility they deserve, so... And I'm getting older, too, you know, and it's, you know, I'm reaching that point where I am elderly, actually, by...
Are we all?
On Medicare standards, so, but, you know, to participate in some of these programs, you know? There's very limited space downstairs. And also, what's gonna be going on, you're gonna have a construction project going forward in this next year, with, you know, installing an elevator, ramps and everything. And I understand that, you know, where the elevator's gonna go is gonna take up half the kitchen downstairs. And while, and even while the, you know, construction's going on, there's only one door to that kitchen, so I don't think it'd be running any, you know, food program out of that kitchen while the elevator is being put in there, so...
Up at the church, is the kitchen accessible, handicap accessible, John?
Yes.
From the main floor down?
Yes, there's a back, from the back door, there is. Not the one immediately to the stairs, but there is a ramp on the far end of the building, which can be very easily adapted to handicap accessibility. It's very, it's almost completely handicap accessible now. There's things that have to be done, and that's why we put together some items in this request. You know, it's not gonna be a perfect building, because it's gonna be a conversion, conversion from a different function. It's not a church anymore. People gotta realize that. It's not a church. It's just a building. And that building, you can adapt any way you want it, you know, with, and I think, and most of the people who support it, they think it's very easily adaptable. It's a lot more handicap in a lot of the other buildings right now, more handicap in most buildings. It won't be in a year, but, you know, hopefully, you know, the renovations and handicap accessibility in this building will be taken care of at this town meeting, so...
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I just have one question. You reconvening at around 6:30 with the Finance Committee? Is it in here?
Around, yes.
Yes.
I don't know if these other gentlemen want to speak as well.
Opening up the floor, if anybody has any comments or questions?
As far as that building, I was a structural designer in that building, and that lasts for another 100 years. It's a steel-framed building, and it won a beautiful architectural prize for that building. I even have the certificate that was in the church in my office. But I'm saying, as far as structural integrity, that's...
Sure question. Thank you. Fran? Okay. Are you requesting a meeting for the public, John? Like a public, just a public input session?
If necessary, if necessary, you know, I don't see this as any standing committee, so it would have to be a Board of Selectmen meeting, or Finance Committee meeting, hearings on it, so more than willing to have a public forum on it. You know, the time is, you know, we got a month, you know, full, well, more than a month now, so...
Because, oh, then, I'd go right into town meeting, and discussion would be on town meeting floor?
Well, you know, if need be, we'd like to, we'd like to resolve a lot of questions that, you know, beforehand, but, you know, historically, Ed, I've been involved with a lot of things, public forums. People don't show up at public forums in Hatfield. They rely on television, you know, they rely on town meeting. Town meeting's still the purest forum of government in New England. They like to get air out there. Even if you have, answer the question in a public forum, you're gonna be answering the same question at town meeting, you know, that you've, from your own experience, because people just won't go to the meeting, they'll say they have the right to stand up at town meeting and ask those questions.
Right. You didn't happen to bring with you tonight any of the information, like what the, what your, what the planning would be for the expenses on the building?
It's in the letter. I presented to you guys on the 12th of January.
That was, that was...
It's all, you know, it was...
You had the breakdown.
I had a breakdown, you know, and how we did it, so... But again, you know, we're not looking for a confrontation, say, we like to see this go, you know, and if you have alternative plans for the Council on Aging and the, you know, the elderly center downstairs, we'd like to hear in this discussion, too, you know? We think the time is growing short for an opportunity to buy that, because sooner or later, you know, and probably sooner, it's gonna be purchased, because if the price keeps dropping and dropping, and then you don't know what's gonna go in there. This way, we know it's gonna be, you know, a public facility, which serving the public, the elderly in Hatfield. So, again, but the town will have to support it, up or down, you know?
Fran?
No, I just wanted to point out that in the letter we sent, the packet we sent, all the cost of the building was involved in that, and also, the extra money for what we thought might need for the remodeling of it, so...
The reason I ask that is, I just, I'd bring it up tonight at the meeting if somebody had it with them. I don't have it with me. But if you wanted to discuss it at the meeting tonight, to let everybody know what it is, that would be a good time to do that, if you had that. You know, just to bring it up, just in case we don't have a public hearing, at least it would give some...
I can tell you that we opened, put it into the Selectmen for $700,000. The price of the building is $599,000, and at this point, we have a tentative agreement to sell it, to buy it for $570,000.
$599,000?
Correct.
Get it for $400,000?
We have a tentative, we have a tentative agreement for $570,000 to purchase the building, and the rest of the money, we put in for remodeling.
Again, that's, that's subject to negotiation by the town and the owner of the property, which can be anybody. We found out from Hatfield to Springfield, so, but a discussion, it'd have to be a frank discussion, you know, and, you know, and if it's...
Unfortunately, John, it would be under executive session, and the people would not be able to see what goes on, because it would be in the negotiation stage.
Right. And, you know, and we're throwing out figures that are, we're giving over the phone, for the most part. You know, there's, you know, you know what happens when you go into a serious negotiation for real estate. You take into a lot of factors, you know, any condition found. You have to have an inspection of the building, probably, before, you know, you enter into full negotiation. But this article's just, is to stimulate, you know, the, what I want to say, the discussion for the building, you know? It may prove, you know, town can't afford it. I couldn't go in there and now, as a private citizen, and negotiate for, you know, town. It has to come from town government. You know, a committee has to be put together, but we'd like to see, you know, we would like to see, the petitioners would like to see that committee put together, and if feasible, do it. Otherwise, we, you know, we'd like to hear what the plans for this, you know, the elderly center going forward's gonna be, you know? Again, we feel that in the basement of the Town Hall, kind of a slap in the face to the elderly. It's served a purpose for a number of years, but going forward, I don't think, you know, it'll work. We had some hope that might have saved, you know, the building across the street, but that never materialized, so it's gonna be torn down, so that eliminates. But I don't want to have to put up a $3 or $4 million, you know, facility to replace it, so, but...
We certainly, we certainly can't afford that.
Okay.
Now's the time to bring something else up? If you want to bring it up, expenses on the building, what it would cost, anything like that?
Well, we put it...
Do you have it in your folder there, or not?
Yeah, we put...
I mean, it's up to you, if you want to bring it up now.
No, we sent you the letter. I mean, I was surprised you didn't get a copy of it.
But the public, no, I'm saying for the public, John.
The public can pick up the letter, you know, I can, you know, it can read what's in the letter. Want to read the letter?
You can, if you'd like, yeah.
All right. Our dear board members, attach your copies of pages of a grassroots citizen's petition asking you to consider for inclusion a warrant article for the purchase and renovation of building and property on Main Street, formerly the Holy Trinity Church, for the development and equipping, equipping of a new senior center for elderly citizens in Hatfield. Our petition is the initiation of a process of asking for your support to bring this proposal up for serious consideration and discussion by the town, while the building and property is still available for sale. We hope the outcome of this process will result in a town seeking to purchase a well-built facility, which has more than 8,000 square feet of very adaptable building space located in the heart of the community. This project presents the town an opportunity to provide more space for improvement to existing elder services, which should also further spur the development of new elderly programs. We feel that securing this property would both enrich and consolidate existing services for the elderly currently limited by space restrictions in the present Town Hall basement location. To secure this building and property, we have presented a reasonable proposal to expend a maximum of $700,000 for this endeavor. See attachment 1. We strongly feel that this amount is realistic to obtaining the property at a fair price for redeveloping the structure with minor renovations and minimal additions, and to allowing the town to tactfully adapt the space within into a very efficient, economical, and accessible venue for delivery of town elder services. We are seriously concerned with the town's ability to be able to maintain, develop, and provide, and sustain expanded and secured services for the growing elderly population. With this concern in mind, we are proposing that town undertake this aggressive, yet frugal capital expansion project to obtain a facility for the elderly of Hatfield, which should address the service needs of the elderly population of Hatfield going into the future. We are not asking, we are not talking or asking for millions of dollars, like many of our neighboring communities have spent to take care of their elderly with extravagant centers or programs. We are only asking for a viable and dignified place where older services can be provided. As the population of Hatfield is growing older, in according to the 2010 census, 1533 or 48% of our 3279 citizens were over 50, and 600, or 18% at the time, were over 65, according to the 2010 census. The over 65 population has now risen to 716, or 21% in the latest 2014 census. We are also fully cognizant to the fact that the town will need to provide the funds for this ambitious endeavor. However, we hope that through careful planning, budgeting, and financing, the project could be completed without severe impact to the current funding limitations. The cost of the purchase by the town, which upon voter approval, could be initially structurally absorbed during negotiation rehabilitation phases, which could take up to a year to complete, and then spread over a 15- to 20-year period within a town's annually budgeted During 2015, the town's annual budget provides direct support for the elderly through the During 2015, the town's annual budget provides direct support for the elderly through the Council on Aging, which was only $78,954, or less than nine tenths of one percent of the entire $9.165 million budget. The necessity of a prudent operating budget for a new facility will indeed increase the annual operating costs for elder services in Hatfield. However, this would be a minimal increase to the overall fixed costs of the town, which has historically been very limited in directing financing, directly financing elder operations. We have estimated that these added costs and have proposed an operating budget for the next fiscal year, including existing appropriations expanded to meet the needs of the Council on Aging Department and its proposed expanding operations. The budget estimate is meant to be realistic for the fully operational standalone facility and transportation services. Historically, very heavily, heavy reliance for services has been placed and now expected from elder service agencies and grants from both state and federal governments. Because of these other agencies, may also be able to provide support for the project we are proposing. We feel that the proposal is very beneficial effort which will vastly improve the delivery of town services for its growing population at a minimum price. Our hope is for you to affirm our intentions to put the proposal to the town meeting for approval of a purchase which will immensely benefit the elder citizens and all the citizens of Hatfield as a whole. And there's elaborate budget in the petition. I don't know why you didn't have a copy, but you.
Oh, we do. This is more for the public, John.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, or any concerns? Okay. Thank you for coming in and.
We'll see you a little later tonight.
Yeah. See how it goes. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, warrant articles. Okay, Paul?
We're probably not in a position to close on the questions remaining because most of them are money articles and we're not real super clear on where we stand financially. But, you know, there's.
Two to be added. Paul worked this with the CPC, the $380,000 more for town hall. And that's also the bridge.
And the bridge.
Which are not in here.
And then there's, there's a lot of, like on page four.
Those are two to add yet.
Yeah, there's, there's like incomplete articles here. These, these just got to be finalized and brushed up on what we're going to present.
Yeah. I did send you an email today. I don't know if everybody saw it. But in regards to proposed Article 11, the trustees are in the process of preparing a warrant article to turn it over to the town, so it looks like, you know, that's moving.
The town to accept the.
The Smith Academy Park.
Academy Park?
Yeah. The treasure collector.
Back on the park, as I suggested, that's going to happen, the DPW, somebody needs to start developing an addendum to their existing budget to take care of the operational expenses, maintenance and scheduling and everything else.
The enterprise funds that we're talking about lumping them together. We're going to keep them the way they are. It's open for discussion. Where, where's the thoughts on, on the enterprise funds?
I would highly recommend we combine the water and sewer enterprise funds. It doesn't solve problems in terms of the financing of our water and sewer infrastructure, but it does provide flexibility in that you end up with one set of retained earnings. You have all the data on the water side, you have all the data on the sewer side, but you end up with, and you're authorized by law, to end up with one set of retained earnings. So for example, we had a special town meeting to deal with $35,000. We could have taken care of that had we had one set of retained earnings. The second part of all this is, and then it's not the backstory, but the primary story. We do not have now anywhere near the amount of money coming in from any sustainable charge that we could make to water and sewer to build up the necessary reserves to maintain and/or expand either our existing water and sewer system. And we have large segments of the system that need to be replaced. The fact is, the fact is, we're going to be going to taxation for those large capital projects. I mean, there's, the, the amount of retained earnings is just not going to be there for multimillion dollar projects. So this simply provides us a degree of flexibility in dealing with smaller problems. There are some other things that we need to be looking at in order to perhaps boost that set of retained earnings, like our allocation of indirect costs. Perhaps they need to be, we created them, maybe we need to take a look at them. That's $90,000 a year coming out of retained earnings to, or what could have potentially been retained earnings to go to cover various other salaries and other, other things. And there's some things clearly discretionary that we could be looking at there. And there are a number of other things in terms of how we're operating that we can look at to potentially save some additional funds. But this is simply to, to take advantage of an existing law that permits us to enter, to combine the two funds and provide us a degree of additional flexibility.
The concern that I would.
And dealing with smaller problems.
The concern that I would have, Jeff, would be that the water pretty much could be self-sufficient, pretty much on that, okay? But the sewer is not. And if you start needing the money for the sewer and taking it from the water, then.
But the fact is, for either water, like we're doing right now with the water transmission line, that's through taxation.
Sure.
Okay. So we're going to be going to taxation for water improvements. And we're going to be going to taxation for capital improvements on the sewer side.
So this is just, this is just for emergency type or somewhere where?
This will just give you one pot of money that either water and/or sewer could go to for smaller, smaller projects essentially, not, not the large project. They're going to come out of taxation no matter what.
Yeah, I mean, just, as I said in my email that I sent to you a while back, the way the budget is set up now, the sewer system, the enterprise fund, has a structural deficit. It's never going to generate enough money to cover all those costs.
Too small.
It's too small. So, yeah, I think several things need to happen. I think, you know, combining the funds make, does make some sense to me. We, I think we definitely need to look at how we're allocating indirect costs. It's, that's a big chunk of money. So, yeah, there's a few things we need to look at. But, yeah, you got a problem here. We got to do something. It's not going to go away. We don't want to have to have a special town meeting every October to fill the, to fill the hole.
Well, we set ourselves up to go here right away. The minute we took indirect costs and all the expenses and stuff that go along with it.
But that's a requirement, that's a requirement in an enterprise fund. But there's some discretion as to how you allocate those. And that's what we really need to look at. You can't eliminate those indirect costs. But right now, it's, you know, it's a hundred, almost $100,000 a year. It comes right off, off the top. Anyway, that's the background of them.
Okay.
The only thing I would add to that is I just think it's important that, which I'm sure is what will happen, is there's still separate accounting within that fund, so. You truly know what the water is, truly know what the sewer is. It's truly a little more flexibility.
You're going to build a different rate for water than for sewer and you're going to have, have all that backup.
Well, you'd still have your tracking.
Yeah.
Each, each account would be separated. It's just that the funds could be utilized for either one.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that everyone realized that on TV.
Sure. Okay, what's this on the pole barn? What's, what's, what's this here?
These are capital projects. So they're just placeholders at this point. You know, we have.
That's DPW yard.
Yeah.
Pole barn or comparing what's stand, what's standing well? That's just about standing. The trusses, the main, the main beam carrying everything is done. It needs to be done before it collapses. The roof is shot, it's got all holes in the roof. I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't know when it was built, but I'm sure it was built at a. That was back in the 80s. Yeah.
It's time.
Yeah, it is a metal roof, yes. But I mean that the main uprights are, should be okay. Yeah, the main, the main posts are okay. It's just that above the main post aren't. So it's, it's basically rebuilding. Correct. Yeah, it's not a new structure. Yeah, okay, it's rebuilding. Although sometimes it's just as simple to get rid of it and then put a brand new one up. Well, that could be. Okay. And that should be. You know, we'll have to see what, we'll have to see what the, the main supporting posts are set in. I don't know how they settle or what they did. I think those were just set on concrete, you know, three feet, four feet in the ground. I don't know, so. Those pole barns, that's all they did was pour concrete in and set the pole right on top of them. But it's, it's a shaky structure right now. And this winter didn't help matters. All right, two generators.
That's a town hall and highway garage.
Okay. On the generators, are we looking for, we're not looking for something like we did next door here. We're just looking for a generic, just to run the power. Yep. And, and, and gas pumps up the highway garage and lighting. Lights, yep. Period. So it can be just a simplified generic generator like. Yep, natural gas both places. Okay, and same thing here at the town hall. Okay. All right, and then freezer would be for the school? Okay.
Why is that, should that be, you got it submitted by the Board of Selectmen, but shouldn't that really be the?
Yeah, school committee, yeah.
School committee?
Yeah.
Wasn't that part of the capital planning?
Yes, well, yeah, I don't know, well.
So maybe that's how it ended up on the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, either way.
Whoever, yeah.
Did we ever, did we ever have somebody come in and take a look at the structural part of that, Brian? You know?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Because I, I know, you know, the, all the controls and stuff like that would, should be all new. But the freezer box, you know, I think sometimes the older ones are a heck of a lot better than the newer ones. Let's put it that way.
I know there's been work done on it numerous times, so I don't know if that's the recommendation from the, you know, the HVAC people or.
Okay.
Maybe Paul, if you don't mind, maybe you could just check with John and see if. I mean, he must have gotten an estimate from someone to come up with the cost and to bring it to capital planning.
All right.
Thank you.
And then the phones, what's going on with the phones, Paul?
That's, that's school again.
That's school as well, yeah.
Okay, that's the school.
Yeah.
Looking at their phone system, both at elementary and the Smith Academy.
Yeah.
Okay. And the $20,000 to create an emergency water connection in City North Hampton. That's back and forth there, that's to tie in that hole. That's the only piece that's not done yet.
Correct.
Up there. Community preservation, all that stuff.
I'm just waiting for Mr. Wagner to submit his articles to me. And there's, there will only be three. Excuse me. They're, I've got, it's on the agenda later on, but might as well talk about it now. You know, the CPC approved $380,000 for, for Phase Two town hall renovations. They approved $185,000 to renovate the Prospect Court Bridge.
That'll clean up that area nicely.
Yeah. And the other project that will be on a warrant, and I can't remember what the dollar amount is, but it's improvements to the cemetery.
Thirty, oh, I'm sorry. It's, oh, it's, it's a, I can tell you. Well, I'll, I'll have it for the next meeting. I've got the information. They're restoring some of the stones.
Some of the stones, right.
Well, I think it was over a year.
Well, this is, this is a major project.
Major project, okay.
And you got CPC funding to, to do it.
And of course, we have, the Article 24 is the petition to purchase the Holy Trinity Church.
Yep.
So until we, you know, free cash has not been certified yet. It's usually certified by now, but it's been in, we had some unusual circumstances this year, which is delayed things. But I do have, you know, the HCOG working with Mike, the accountant, he's in Florida, to get the Schedule A in, number one, and number two, to get the free cash certified, so. We're, you know, we, we need, we need to get the Schedule A submitted and the free cash certified, you know, PDQ. You know, we're running out of time.
When will that be done?
Hopefully by the end of the month.
Can't get it done any quicker?
That's okay if we get it done by the end of the month.
Yeah.
What's that?
It's okay if we get it, nothing.
Well, I did see and hear that they were stopping all.
If we don't get it in by the end of the month.
Not yet. Yeah, if we, if we're, I can't remember when the deadline was.
If we get, if we're, if we're into April, then we get cut off until we turn it in.
Right.
Otherwise, if we get it in this month, we're okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all the more reason we, we get going on, on the accountant's position.
Yeah.
And get that going. I know you got like six applicants.
Yeah.
And if we got qualified applicants, I think we ought to just deal with them.
But let's, let's talk, if we don't mind taking one thing out of a turn, we're going to talk about.
I don't have a problem with that.
Accountants, are we all agreed, or this is going to be a full-time position?
This should be at least 35.
We need to be able to talk to that when we interview people. They want to know how many hours they're working or not.
Well, that's, that's how.
Folks are already saying, well, 19 hours, I don't want to work that.
Well, you know, they didn't read the ad.
I saw that.
It says a full-time.
It's more than half perhaps.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure. It says, the ad reads full-time benefited position.
It should be at least a 35-hour position.
I'd say at least, yeah.
Okay, 35 to 40 hours.
So, and the pay commensurate with a full-time.
Experience, yeah.
Full-time accountant.
Well, I think we need to come up with the amount of hours or is that going to be part of the negotiation that we'll say that we, we expect something to be a minimum of however many hours and pay them accordingly? That's what I mean.
It'll be four days a week for right now.
Why four days a week?
Could be five.
Five.
At future.
Or so many hours per week, I mean.
That, that position could work five. In that way, they would have a Friday to work without the public interrupting them. Okay, or anybody interrupting them?
I just, I mean, we're absolutely correct. We just need to, as applicants come in, say it's, it's a 40-hour week or it's a 30-hour, or whatever it's going to be. We just need to wrap that up, whether that's tonight.
I'm sure that it could go to, it'd be easily adaptable to a 40-hour week.
Yeah.
We got to start there, we can always back off.
Yeah. Our auditor, you know, I've, he said to me some time ago in a phone conversation, you need somebody in there 32 hours a week, Monday through Thursday, at a minimum. In my, in my opinion, it's probably a 40-hour a week position. So it's between 32 and 40 and.
I wouldn't want to cut it short.
No, no. Well, it's going to be a salaried position, so, you know, and, and, you know, like any job like that, the workload's going to vary, you know, to a certain extent from week to week.
The work gets done.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter how long it takes.
Right.
Okay. The next step is, when do we want to hold a meeting? Do we want to have a special meeting on this here to put it together? Look at, or at least get us a copy of the, the applications?
Well, we do, we do have a.
He has a, we have a screening committee.
We have a screening committee.
Right.
We have a screening committee, too?
Yes, yeah.
Now, understand, screening committee makes recommendations. We can still go back and look at all the, all the applicants.
I would like to see the application myself, okay?
I think we all.
You know, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. The screening committee, as long as they weed out the people that.
Yeah.
You know, the person that has no municipal experience, I'll. you know, the person that has no municipal experience, I'll, you know, put them on the side until, you know, until we decide.
Yeah, yeah. Well, with only six applicants, I wouldn't want to rule out anybody at this point. But certainly...
But you don't understand, well, you do understand because municipal experience is a whole different line of work than a regular accounting position.
Yes, yeah.
You have to know all the ins and outs of DOR and all that other stuff.
And there's only one applicant that I say fits that description. And what is more important, I think, is that they have an accounting background and that they're, you know, and they're motivated to learn the municipal side. Going into this, I never, I never anticipated seeing one application with somebody that already had municipal experience. So we're going to have to make the best of the situation.
Well, let's take a look at them and then we'll go from there. Can you get us a copy of all this?
Absolutely. No problem.
I didn't mean to digress in it, but I wanted to lock down. So we're talking about a 40-hour week and...
Yep.
Paul had proposed a pay range.
Okay, is there anything else on the town meeting?
I think that's about as far as we can get tonight, I would say.
I just have a general question.
Sure.
So if, for example, one of the proposed articles from the planning board, or they have a couple or different sections, but do any changes to existing bylaws, is anything grandfathered or does it change from that day forward? Is that the new rule and policy?
That's the new ruling. Let me rephrase that. If it's, if they've adopted, I guess the scenario that I'd like to use is, let's say, the signs, okay? Signs in front of your building, if they were adopted to make them smaller, the people that had signs there at the time of adoption can still have those and they're grandfathering. Otherwise, the new signs would be...
So it's anything on a kind of a go-forward basis, has to meet whatever changes?
Yes, okay. And on some of the stuff, if you do a complete, what you call it, well, every 10 years, we do a...
Renovation or...
Like a what?
A renovation?
No, no. When we take a look at, you do all the articles, I mean, all the zoning articles over again, okay?
Oh, a complete overhaul, you mean?
Well, every 10 years, you should go through and redo them, revisit them. And then that would change, and then you have to be careful because it could affect everybody on, you know, that's in there.
I mean, I just know that in reading this, I'm just curious as to if those questions will be asked of the planning board or a bus, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood the process. If somebody asks, well, does this affect something that's already been happening? Or does this only affect something that's going to happen after town meeting?
It depends on what the article is. Yeah. It depends on the issues.
Right, but who would make that determination?
The planning board. Somebody from the planning board would stand up and give the explanation of that.
And that's fine, as long as we're just following all the legal aspects of things. Okay.
The other Little Naposet Road came up again. Did Timmy stop in and see you?
He did, and...
I know we talked about Little Naposet Road before I left.
Yeah, he talked about...
We got something from Coupleman Page. Talks about, we only got six minutes.
So he's requesting that an article be placed for the annual town meeting to determine the status of Little Naposet Road. I explained to him that we can't, town meeting cannot determine the status of Little Naposet Road. Its current status is unknown. It's probably not a town road. There's absolutely no record of it.
Well, it's not a town road unless there's some positive record that it is.
And I gave him a copy of, and I left them in my office because I wanted to give one to you guys. It's a memorandum from Coupleman and Page. It lays out the whole process for town road acceptance. And it's a rather intricate process. And, you know, in the end result, I explained to Tim that, you know, the road will need to be surveyed. We will need to have a meets and bounds description, and then that needs to go before town meeting, before it can become a town road.
What I'd like to do is just go into discussion at another meeting instead of this one here because we don't have enough time here.
Yeah, we don't need to spend any time on this.
You should read that Coupleman and Page thing. It's, there's lots of...
Can skip over, let's see, appointments.
Number four, yeah, we'll do that.
Appointments. Which one's that? Oh, okay.
For Jared.
Appointments, resignations.
I move to approve appointment of Mr. Gerald E. Clark as Town of Hatfield Veterans Benefits and Services Officer.
Motion made, seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Well, just for folks, he's been, he is a Massachusetts resident. He is a veteran, been a member of the American Legion here in Hatfield for 47 years, also a member of the VFW. He's been on the Veterans Council in Northampton for 10 years. That's extensive experience. He's had discussions with our current Veteran Service Officer, Paul, and Paul highly recommends him. And I've spoken to him as well, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay.
You also need to...
I move to renew the appointment of Mr. Scott Pomeroy as our Inspector of Animals.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Move to accept with, move to accept the resignation of Ms. Helen Bardwell from the Board of Registraus and to commend her for roughly 45 years of service in that role.
That's awesome.
Motion made, seconded.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, just thank you very much, Helen.
If not, I'd just like to say the same thing. We thank you very much, Huddy, for all the work that you've done and for your service, and good luck to you, and take care. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? If not?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, are all these to be voted tonight?
Okay, town government study.
All right, so we're going to...
We can put that in next.
All right.
Center School.
We're skipping over that, okay?
Yeah, we're going to skip over.
Well, we need to, yeah.
I'm trying to...
Yeah, move things along.
Yeah.
Yeah, just quickly on Center School, it will appear, the project will appear in the central register tomorrow. So I should have the bid documents laying around this week, so we're ready to roll.
Okay.
And we already talked about the CPC project, so...
Okay, okay. We probably can discuss the town government study a little bit if you want.
I didn't put that in. I think...
That's all right. Well, we can, it's 6:30, right?
There was a, I didn't put that in, but there was a DOR proposal, well, flyer saying that they're available to do various studies. And I just reminded folks that in January of 2011, we had, Department of Revenue here did a financial management review. And part of that, the introductory part, was, not introductory, but a significant section, covered town government and town structure, particularly with regard to financial management. Talked about roles and responsibilities, made suggestions about making the town treasurer and town collector appointed positions. Talked about expanding the role of the town administrator in the budget process. Talked about developing a charter for the town.
Well, the reason that I brought this forward, for all the things you stated really, was just with the turnover and the changes, was just to see, since they do free analysis, if they would make any recommendations for, you know, the structure of our government or not. And my thinking is, or was, because we couldn't locate that report, Paul.
It's not right online.
It's online?
Yeah.
And the reason I had asked was, we bring things forward as a board, and this way we can say to the townspeople, you know, rather than them just thinking Jeff, Ed, and Brian are bringing this forward, we can, documentation is, you know, this is a recommendation from the experts who did a review, and this is their recommendation.
And that's all we can do is, it just adds reinforcement to what we've said last year.
Right, so people know where it's coming from.
Exactly, exactly.
So I remember seeing that report in my old office, and after the move, it disappeared somewhere. It's probably still in there somewhere, but I haven't been able to put my hand on it.
All right, well, I'll look it up. I didn't come across it online, but I don't know where to drill down on it.
Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, there's studies, it's Hatfield 2011.
All right, and maybe things have changed in five years, four years, given the circumstances of what the... Right, but perhaps with the changeover and what's gone on in the town, it might, you know.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, is there any other business, Paul, that you need to bring up?
No, I'm good. I'm all set, Ed.
You're good? Okay.
We're going to...
All right, this concludes this portion of the selectmen's meeting. We'll be going into the finance committee meeting and the Board of Selectmen meeting discussing the town budget, yearly, year-end budget, or our new budget for the new fiscal year. And we'll take a short break and then get on with our meeting jointly. Thank you.